Good evening, everyone. This is the O N J Roberts Board of School Directors Regular Business Meeting being held on April 21, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation of Colors by the Navy Junior Reserves Officer Training Corps, followed by a moment of silence. Present colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present, the elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania and elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Color Guard, post colors. Please be seated. 3.1 Executive Session Announcement. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas: legal, personnel, or real estate matters on April 7, 2025, and on April 21, 2025. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Stout.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. We're going to begin tonight with Maggie Mullen and the Student Council Executive Report.
In the elementary schools, the 2024-2025 P S S A Assessment Window begins this week for students in grades three through six. Please join us in encouraging our students to eat well, get plenty of sleep, and attend school regularly during testing. As the end of the year approaches, we look forward to upcoming events which will highlight our students' talents. Please review teacher and principal newsletters carefully and make note of important dates for upcoming concerts, art shows, and student competitions. In the middle school, on April 4th, Middle School Chapter of the Try and Music Honor Society held their annual benefit concert with all funds raised donating towards Music for Everyone, a nonprofit organization out in Lancaster. The night was entirely organized and ran by students with many talented performers throughout the evening. On Friday, April 11th, Middle School Varsity Singers sang the Star Spangled Banner at the Reading Rules Hockey Game. Middle School students and staff are gearing up for P S S A and Keystone Exam Testing throughout the remainder of April and May. The Middle School P T A Spring Dance is scheduled for Friday, April 25th. We are excited to offer this event for our students. We are still in dire need for more chaperones in order to make it happen. We will be recognizing our April Wildcats of the Month for breakfast and a brief ceremony on April 4th. I mean, April 2025. I mean, April 25th. Four middle school teams competed in the Odyssey of the Mind State Championships earlier this month. Three of our teams finished in third place, narrowing the opportunity to compete in the World Finals Competition this May in Michigan. We are proud to announce that Ms. Duffy and Mr. Matthews' vehicle team finished in second place and will be moving on into Michigan. We are very proud of all these students and wish Ms. Duffy and Mr. Matthews, as well as their teams, the best at Worlds. Moving into the high school, the high school thanks its students, staffs, and families for their efforts in the 2025-26 course selection and verification processes. We've approached this process with the greater intention to improve everyone's overall experience. This past month, our performing arts students have been actively showcasing their talents. Over 2,000 guests attended five performances of The Little Mermaid, one of the year's highlights. The jazz band hosted a swing dance, and our indoor percussion ensemble placed fourth regionally at the MAPS Finals and 16th nationally at the W G I Finals in Daytona, Ohio. The yearbook was recognized for the design excellence by Justin Nash and featured the 2025 Lockbook. Coding Crew students participated in several events and hosted their own hackathon. World Language Honor Societies inducted new members, and the N J R O T C held its Change of Command Ceremony. Two Odyssey of the Mind teams advanced to the World Finals at Michigan State. Our students also continue to grow as leaders and give back to the community. We held a successful spring blood drive. Animal Studies students visited second-grade classrooms to teach about adaptations, and students from the Leo Club and Football Team helped move inventory for Ian's boots. Juniors participated in a financial fair, and 100 students took part in Challenge Day to foster stronger connections within our community. End-of-the-year events are underway. The junior prom was held April 5th at Sunnybrook Ballroom, with senior prom set for May 10th. We're also excited to host our first-ever Senior Decision Day on May 2nd. Senior families are encouraged to check the weekly newsletters for updates on graduation and related activities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maggie. Last month, we recognized a number of students who received distinguished honors through the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association, but we left one off the list. So, we recognized all the choral students, but we left our one band student who also qualified for All-State Band, and that's Sohum Bandyopatier. He is not here tonight, but I did want to recognize him for his distinguished honor with band. And now, we have a staff recognition. I'll turn it over to Dr. Soder.
Good evening, everyone. The Pennsylvania State Modern Language Association provides professional development and resources for world language teachers across the state. In addition, they provide an award opportunity for high schools that demonstrate high-quality programming. Specifically, the high-quality programming is determined by an 11-feature rubric at four levels. The levels are a Globe Award for World Language, a Bronze Globe, a Silver Globe, or a Golden Globe. And I'm very pleased to share that, once again, our high school has qualified for a Golden Globe Award. And here this evening to accept the award is our World Language Department Chair, Audrey Andre. And I'll share the P S M L A, the Pennsylvania State Modern Language Golden Globe Award. This prestigious statewide award is given to schools that provide evidence of high-quality, standards-based, proficiency-oriented foreign language instruction. A program such as this is not possible without the direction and support from the administration and the school board. The dedication of teachers and the hard work of students are all to be commended. The award provides evidence to parents, community members, and taxpayers that their world language program is exemplary. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We don't take it for granted, but our foreign language, they're winning awards all the time. So, very well done. So, we have one retiree on tonight's agenda, Carol Frost. Carol's not with us tonight, but Carol's been with the district for 12 years and has been an integral part of our Human Resources Department, where she has capably handled a wide variety of responsibilities. Her support of our employees, especially in areas such as certification and benefits administration, have been invaluable. Carol's patient and gentle nature will be deeply missed by her colleagues. On tonight's agenda, we will also be seeking approval for David Francella, be our Director of Business and Operations, effective July 1. David is the current CFO at New Hope-Saulberry School District in Bucks County and has extensive experience in school business, finance, and operations. Also on tonight's agenda, the board administration community will be recognizing our teachers and bus drivers. This is the beginning of the fourth quarter, and there are lots of end-of-the-year activities, as Maggie had mentioned in her report, but I'll just highlight a few. April 23rd is the Annual Farm Day, where our high school students welcome our younger students for an introduction into the agriculture program. We even have a rain date for that of April 24th. The senior prom is scheduled for Saturday, May 10th, at the Sheridan Valley Forge in King of Prussia. Details can be found on the high school webpage. S A Ts are scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th, and this year's Special Olympics event will be held on Wildcat Field on Friday, May 9th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We are going into Agenda Item 5, Public Comment, 5.1, Public Comment on Agenda Items. There are two opportunities for public comment. The first section is for information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to items on the agenda that will be voted on tonight. Speakers are to indicate your name, township of residence, and the item or items on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. The second section will be at the end of the meeting, and is for residents to speak on any item. If you have any question for the school board, you may also email all Board of School Directors at schoolboardmembers@ojrsd.net. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence. All right, moving on to Committee Board Reports. 6.1 Working Sessions. A working session was held on April 7, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. The following committees met at this time: Curriculum and Special Education, Finance, Buildings and Grounds, and Legislative and Policy. 6.2 Chester County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Munson.
The intermediate unit. Let me try this again. Intermediate Unit met this past Wednesday, and one of the things that they gave me to present to, back to the district, was a Preparing Students Together handout that features our district's statistics on how many of our students are attending programs, mostly at T C H Pickering, coming from our district, but they're counting anybody who's in a program for the C C I U, I believe. Actually, maybe not, because it does say Technical College High School at the top, so it may be just the T C H S attendees. But it goes into detail about how many of them have gotten what sort of certifications that will do them good in the workforce afterwards, how many of them went on to jobs immediately afterwards, or how many had internships while they were still in the T C H S program. So, there's a lot of good information in there. And I did sneak a peek at one of my neighbors, and we had 13% of eligible students in the programs, and they only had 12%. So, we're doing better than somebody at something. But nevertheless, I think, you know, we do have a lot of students who very much value the education that they're getting at T C H S, because there are very different programs offered then that we can have here in our high school, and very much looking forward to more information about them if you're interested in digging into them. Another thing that probably everybody is already aware of, but the C C I U is watching the news on Head Start Federal Funding, because that does seem to be one of the programs at risk at the federal level, and we'll certainly be interested in attending or find out more at the Legislature Annual Breakfast that I believe all of you have an invitation to. And we can ask questions of our local legislators about what they know about state approach to federal changes as well there. And the next meeting will be the third Wednesday in May, the 21st, at 7:30 P. M. at the C C I U. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Curriculum and Special Education Committee, Ms. Sabo.
The Curriculum and Special Education Committee met during the April Working Session. There was one item on the agenda, Dr. Monahan shared information about the H M H Interreading Resource. Throughout the winter, grade-two and grade-five teachers in each school have piloted the reading program with their students. Second-grade teacher Emily Orso and fifth-grade teacher Shelley Flick spoke about their experiences using the program. The strengths of the program included increased student engagement, ease of use for teachers, additional assessments for each model with available student data, and differentiated lessons. Survey results from the piloted teachers were very favorable toward recommending the program. Dr. Monahan discussed next steps, professional development, and opportunities with the publisher representative. The H M H materials are on the agenda for tonight, including the Secondary Social Studies text. The next Curriculum and Special Ed meeting will be scheduled from the May Working Session on May 12th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabo. Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee, Mr. Harmonos.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Commission or Committee met during the Working Session, and we discussed the five-year capital projects fund budget and also the proposed general fund budget for the 2025-2026 school year, which we will be voting on to approve the proposed budget in items 13.14 through 13.16. So far this year, we've held, we've held five public meetings to review and discuss proposed budget. And all of the presentations and items are located in the board docs for public viewing. We managed to recommend a tax increase of 2.5% for property tax, which is currently the lowest for the 12 schools districts within Chester, or the third lowest of the 12 school districts in Chester County. Our final budget will be up for approval in next month's meeting on May 27th. Additional items in tonight's meeting are 13.18, approval to award contract for copiers for the next four years. 13.19 is approval of an addendum to the Schrader Group Architectural Services to provide design services for the infrastructure grant received to upgrade our H V A C systems. And 13.20, approval of an agreement through Gordon Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative for classroom renovations at French Creek Elementary and West Vincent Elementary in preparation for our full-day kindergarten for next year. And finally, 13.21, approval of an agreement of sale of real estate for the purchase of the property on 1051 Cadmus Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmonos. Legislative and Policy Committee, Ms. Evans.
The Legislative and Policy Committee met during the April 7th Working Session. We discussed proposed language changes to two regulations. Regulation 5B, removal of board officer procedures, and Regulation 707A, use of school facilities, application and approval process. The committee voted to move the following policies forward to the full board for a first reading. These are listed on the agenda tonight under Agenda Item 7.8. Policy 308, Employment Contract Board Resolution. Policy 707, Use of School Facilities. Policy 707.1, gambling, games of chance, and raffles. Policy 823, opioid antagonist. It was agreed that some of the language would be removed from Policy 707 to avoid confusion within the policy, but we didn't make any substantive changes, and those updates are reflected in the current version on tonight's agenda. Of note, Policy 707 is being renumbered from 707A to align with P S B A's numbering system, and there's no change to the policy language. And let's see, Policies 008 and 008.1 were moved forward to the full board tonight for deletion, and they appear as under Agenda Item 7.9. And finally, we reviewed an initial draft of Policy 815.1. This is a new A I policy that we are creating as a district. This is a work in progress, and I've invited all board members to send suggestions and feedback as we work to develop a thoughtful, values-based policy that ensures the use of A I in our schools, supports student learning, protects student safety, and reflects the mission and vision of our district. And L N P will next meet at the May 12th Working Session.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. 6.6 Personnel Committee, Mr. Chester.
Personnel Committee did not meet at the last working session.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7. 7.1, May I have a motion to approve recommended routine matters as consent items 7.2 through 7.10 as action consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos.
Second.
Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 8.1, Acknowledge Receipt of Donations, Contributions, and Gifts. May I have a motion to accept receipt of donations, contributions, and gifts as presented, which include, at French Creek Elementary, $1,550 for the second-grade field trip to Legoland on January 17, 2025, and $900 for the fifth grade to go snowboarding at Bear Creek Mountain on February 7, 2025, both donated by the P T A.
So moved.
Dr. Rotoli.
Second.
Ms. Shavel Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 9.1, may I have a motion to approve routine matters as consent items 9.2 through 9.5?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Rotoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 10.1, Board Discussion. Is there any board discussion at this time?
David, there was something that you were talking about earlier. Did you want to bring it up in this section?
I was going to bring it up in Section 12.
I was just thinking, because it's, in my mind, more of a procedural thing that this might be an appropriate section to discuss it.
I mean, yeah, sure. I guess it doesn't make that much of a difference. In Item 12.2, we're looking, I'm sorry, 12 point. 12.3, we're looking to approve the new Director of Finance, which would take over for Mrs. Crumride for next year. And in my opinion, I'm not ready to make that decision at this point. The candidate was just introduced to us tonight, and it's a big decision. It's a big role, probably, you know, just as important as the superintendent's role in our district. I think Jackie's just done a tremendous job, you know, over her tenure here, tenure here, and I just need more time to consider other candidates. We, you know, as a board at large, we only brought one candidate for consideration, so I have nothing to compare to at this point. Mrs. Crumride also did not meet with the candidate, and I know that that's maybe not a traditional thing, but maybe that would have been a nice step to meet with. And also, as Chair of the Finance Board and Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee, I did not get to meet with any of the candidates as well. So, in my opinion, I'm just not ready to move forward with that appointment at this time.
Well, and the reason that I was encouraging you to bring it up here is because I think the conversation could go in multiple ways, and I didn't want the conversation to be a direct reflection on the candidate himself, because I don't believe that that is what this is about. But...
I mean, partially, you know, the candidate came out of the gate saying that he would recommend the highest Act One index tax increase for each year, and then he said he would negotiate down from that, and that's just not the way this board has operated. So, that would be a major change in the way we discuss our budget.
I don't think that's a fair assessment.
Well, but even apart from the candidate, I agree with the ground statements that you made previously about the CFO being...
I want to just make a point of order. It's not appropriate for us to discuss individual candidates. If we want to discuss process...
That's appropriate, but it's not appropriate to discuss individual candidates or personnel matters.
Typically, you would reserve those discussions for an executive session. It is a permissible discussion in executive session as far as the merits of the candidacy. Process and procedure, you can always make a motion to table.
Do we want to go to executive session to discuss this further?
I mean, my perspective of bringing it up was more about the policy of replacing a CFO than the candidate in question.
Is it...
Are we allowed to discuss in that direction?
Does it make sense to have a lengthy discussion now, not knowing which way the vote is going to go? Maybe we get to the vote, and, I mean, if it's nine to one, or then this is a moot point.
My concern is around policy, not the candidate in question.
So, in terms of policy and participation in an interview process...
Right, that's what I wanted to discuss.
In this particular case, the board was solicited for participation. An email was sent from our H R Director to the entire board asking for feedback and participation in the process. It is my understanding, I believe, two to three people participated back in that conversation. And again, I don't have all the information in front of me, but perhaps Ms. Sabo can answer that. But we took feedback from the questions. Questions that were submitted were used as part of the interview process, and those who asked to participate were invited. Short of asking everyone how they want to participate or to be participatory in the process, at some point, there is onus on one's ability to participate in the process.
Right, exactly.
Given an opportunity to participate.
So, you said that there was an email sent out to the full board asking, do people want to participate?
Asking, yes.
And that is our standard practice to do so.
Generally, yes. You know, it is not. And then, it was brought to the Personnel Committee additionally, so those questions that had been submitted were shared, I believe, with the Personnel Committee. Or...
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. And then, some of those questions, at least in the interview I was in, were asked.
And so, I just went and reviewed policy very quickly to figure out, you know, what is the level of full board participation? And I think there was only a distinction made for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent that it said that that vote would require a two-thirds majority rather than the majority of the board. So, I was looking at it from a perspective of, do we consider the CFO to be a position of such importance that it should be that level for future decisions up there with the superintendent and assistant superintendent? Because there seemed to be such, I guess, value of that position.
I think that we are generally following the best practice for how, for this level of position. Additionally, the contracts, for instance, our contract with the superintendent is a term contract, correct, in terms of number of years and...
I'm sorry. It's a commission for the superintendent, three to five years, under the school code for a business administrator. It can be a term contract.
So, they are different types of employment contracts, which is part of the delineation and the process within the board, or has typically been a part of the delineation and the difference in the process. Although not having been here when Dr. Stout or Dr. Soder were hired, I can't typically speak to how we hire superintendents, because I've not gone through that process yet.
Right.
So, as someone who has gone through the superintendent process, so the whole board sits in on the hiring of the superintendent. So, that's just common practice, and that happens in school districts. We typically don't do that for other positions where we would have the whole board. We would put together a committee, and I feel very confident with our process. We had this position open for several weeks. I think we even extended the opening. We had 34 applicants for the position. We did a round of video screening, and then from there, brought candidates in to meet with a stakeholder group. We had about 18, 15, 18 people in that stakeholder group, including several board members. And then, we brought those same candidates in to meet with our cabinet team and made a recommendation here tonight after extensive background checks or reference checks on the candidate. So, I feel comfortable with the process that we use for this. I know it's a big position. It's something that we've labored over, just in replacing Jackie. I feel the same way. I wish we weren't here tonight doing it. But taking her aside and the job that she does for our district, I feel very confident... Uh, but taking her aside and the job that she does for our district, I feel very confident in the process that we went through to select the candidate that we have on the agenda tonight.
Okay, and I did find an email from Kristen, it was a form response that that was the that we were supposed to do, a Google form. David, are you comfortable with the selection process, or do you still have issues with that?
I've just, I feel like I was in the dark about it, so, you know, I I I don't have anything to compare this to at this point, it's not like I'm 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 picking a choice, it's like, you know, here's the guy, we interviewed fifty people, here's the guy. And I just, I feel like this position is too important to be, you know, vetted that way, i- in my opinion, you know. My opinion. I I just like some more time, I'd like to table this, possibly.
Well, we can't table the board discussion, I was just bringing up the discussion about the proper process separate from the decision about
Yeah, so I mean, I think that we need to, I think we should probably revisit the process for this position, you know.
So, what I'll say is, I I hear you about your misgivings around the process and feeling like you were in the dark, even though it was pointed out several communication. I was, I didn't sit in on the interview process that the personnel choose, because the the, it just didn't fit into my schedule. But I am comfortable with the decision that the team has made in the process that's currently in place. If it's a process that we want to review and say, hey, maybe we can tighten it up here, or make some modifications to the current way we want to run the district going forward, um, I think we can take that to the personnel committee and 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 work on some changes. But I don't think it's, uh, at least it doesn't, to me, rise to the level of tabling the conversation, but I'm more than welcome to vote if anybody else feels that way.
And, um, you know, I I'm not sure if I'm, I I met the candidate for fifteen minutes, and I'm not sure if I'm, you know, comfortable from that brief interaction.
Well, drawing the question of the process back, which is what I would like to have the board consider. Are we comfortable that sending out a Google form to get the the board's opinion on who should be a part of the selection process and the questions that we want to ask that candidate? Is that sufficient for the rest of the board, does everybody feel that that is a suspicion process?
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that being a question to the board on the spot.
Yeah, okay.
I I clearly am not comfortable with that, because I I missed it, you know, I get five hundred emails a day, and I get one email and I missed it, and that was the only mention, no one reached out and said
To our president's point at some point, and I am the, probably the biggest offender in this area on the board, you gotta take some onus on
Absolutely.
On being informed, right? So, I believe our HR director did a a a job in soliciting, uh, it was a Google forum, and that forum, and asked if you wanted to be an active participant. I saw it, I filled it out. That was the only part of the process that fit into my personal schedule. So at some point, you also have to say, do we trust our administration team to give us a good recommendation? I mean, typically, when I'm hiring somebody, I don't go and say, this is my my frontrunner, but here are the other people I'm not picking, that's just not how it's how it's done. Right, so, so again, if we want to talk about the process amongst the personnel committee and change that process or policy, open to it, but, um, but I don't think it's fair to ask people to on the spot feel like they've been disenfranchised by the way we solicited participation this time around.
I'm with Lauren here, uh, I think you can make this argument about relative importance about many positions in the district. If we were hiring a high school principal, middle school principal, elementary principals, they're absolutely critical too, and I don't want to ever get in a position where um, board representation and administration have put in a process, made a decision, and then I'm going to try to micromanage or overreach in that. If we want to talk about process in the future, I think that's a fine discussion, but I think it was in enough people's hands to make it a good decision.
And when I had a question, I contacted someone, you were at the lake. So I contacted Nick when when I had a question, so I had, I I trusted to go by what he heard at, when he interviewed the gentleman. You know, like, like, you have to have, I have trust in all of you, so I trusted the people who made that decision. But I hear you. It's what they believe.
So, are we comfortable moving forward with the idea that, uh, Personnel Committee would take a look at our processes moving forward? Uh, and whether or not you choose to vote on this particular candidate, we have the opportunity to do that two sections from now.
Thank you, I really wanted to hear other people's opinions, and this has been very good for me, so I'm sorry if anybody felt it was a waste of our time, but this was what I needed to hear, thank you.
And and should that be in Personnel, or should it be in LMP?
Yeah, that's a good question, because
We don't, we don't typically have hiring processes like this within LMP, like
No, no, but we have the process that is set down to do it.
True, I, there isn't a policy specific to it, we would have to invent something if we want to make a policy. So, right, exactly, if we don't want to go to that level, then
Right, because there there's, you know, I don't want to say warrant factions, they can certainly be together factions, but, um, what is, uh, uh, appropriate uh, from a legal hiring perspective versus what, uh, what level of information or access everyone should, you know, for instance, not discussing certain personnel items in public, right? So there is, you know, uh, guidelines here that if we are going to be looking to change our employment process or policies, this is not something we do in a vacuum and we create as a board, there are very clear legal guidelines between what, you know, keeps us, as I always say, street legal in terms of, uh, hiring. So we never want to, uh, go on the wrong side of that.
I mean, I just, I take a little exception to the comment of micromanaging, that's not what this is about. I I just think, again, the 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 gravity of this position, um, just requires a little more consideration.
We moving forward? This time? Okay. Old business, eleven point one, Mrs. Carmine, for the second to last time, do we have any old business?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. I know, okay. Bring you all down, thank you. Okay, we are moving into new business and personnel consent items. Uh, as a notation, we are, as a note, we are going to be proving, or I'm going to be approving as consent items twelve point two, or asking for a motion to consider, uh, approving consent items twelve point two through twelve point six. You will notice that twelve point seven, uh, within this agenda is its own, um, uh, agenda item for approval, because I do have a, um, conflict, okay? So, may I have a motion for, uh, twelve point one, motion to approve personnel matters consent items twelve point two through twelve point six?
So moved.
Mr. Chester.
Second.
Dr. Rattoli, any discussion?
I'd like to separate twelve point three out from the consent items.
Okay, so can you make a motion to do that, please?
My motion, we vote on twelve point three separately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, we are, I'm gonna vote the first. Okay. And I need that as a second motion. That's what's on the table, okay, so any discussion on the original motion, which is twelve point three, to, any additional discussion for twelve point two through twelve point six with twelve point three removed? Is there any additional discussion on the agenda items not including twelve point three? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, there's currently additional motion on the floor, uh, to, on the approval of agenda item twelve point three, that was a motion by Mr. Harmonos and seconded by Mr. Chester. Is there any, oh, sorry.
Well, I would ask for a motion to approve twelve point three.
Okay, is there a motion to approve twelve point three?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Rattoli and Mr. Chester, any discussion?
Again, just following up on our, uh, open discussion, uh, I'd like to, uh, just have a little more time with the District Administration, Director of Business and Operations position.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
Can I just ask a question, this isn't, it, are we voting to table this, to put this off?
We are still, we are voting to approve, we are voting to approve this motion, so approve the hiring of this person. So if you, we have, there is a motion for
Twelve point three.
Twelve point three, which is the approval of all of those positions within twelve point three, there are other candidates within this as well. So there is currently a motion on the table to approve twelve point three.
Or not.
Or not.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Should we, should we motion to separate out the one position from twelve point three?
If you would like to, you can, or we could go to a motion to just approve, and if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't pass, then we can separate them out and motion again.
The motion to approve is on table.
There is a motion to approve, so we're gonna take a vote on that motion.
You could, Mr. Harmonos, it could make a motion to amend, that would require a second, and, um, if it, and a vote. So if you wanted to amend the motion to separate out the, um, business administrator position, you could
Yeah, okay, okay, I'm I'm motion to separate out the approval of the Director of Business and Operations position from item twelve point three.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it again.
All right, then we should vote on this motion to amend.
Okay, is there any discussion?
There is, yeah, you can discuss a motion to amend.
Okay, is there any discussion at this time?
I want to just make it clear that I am seconding David's motions, because I want to make sure that his opinion is heard, and if anybody has similar opinion, you know, please speak up and and make it known, right? I don't want us to get to this vote, and if it passes or doesn't pass, someone to feel like their point of view or opinion wasn't heard by the entire board.
Any additional discussion? Okay, so all in, and to be clear
This is on the motion to amend.
This is the
The motion to amend.
Right. So it it, this is only to determine whether or not you're going to pull out that position and then vote on the two, the position separately.
Okay. So all in favor of a motion, which is to pull out this position and vote separately on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
We're gonna have to go to a roll call.
I believe so. Because I'll catch that. Okay, this is a motion to pull out, um, the business manager or director of business and operations position.
Again, this is not a vote on whether to hire, this is a vote on whether or not to have it as its own.
To pull it out as a separate item for voting. You're not voting on this, you're just pulling it out as a separate item for voting.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Munson.
Aye.
Mrs. Shavel Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Rattoli?
No.
Mr. Chester?
Nay.
Mrs. Peterson?
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Mrs. Sabo?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Aye.
And Mr. Harmonos?
Aye.
So now you have a motion, I would, I would recommend moving, um, uh, having a motion for the, uh, approval of the Director of Business and Operations.
So someone has to make that motion?
Well, I that motion's on the table, because it was removed, so that, we, the the motion to amend was to remove that. Um, so we have on the table, uh, the two separate motions, the first one would be for this position. Follow me? So this, what's, what's on the table is a motion to approve the Director of Business and Operations, uh, uh, hiring as recommended by the administration. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? If not, you can call that verbal.
I would say, you know, regardless of of how we feel about, um, what the process is at this point, restarting this proc, restarting this process does not change the candidates who participated in it. I am confident if we reposted and restarted, we would have the same pool of candidates. We would be coming back to the same three finalists, uh, or the same amount of finalists, and would be, um, recommending the same candidate. Whether or not, um, the process was, um, met the needs of the entire organization, to me, is is a separate conversation. Um, I don't think a different process nets a different candidate at this time. I think that, um, our candidate is, um, incredibly qualified. Will be stepping into, as we all acknowledge, very difficult to to follow path. Um, but, um, I have confidence in the process that our administration followed for this, for this candidate. Um, and have, you believe this to be the right candidate for this position. And so I know that my vote will be to, uh, move forward with Mr. Fransella.
And just to emphasize, you know, what was said before, uh, I personally did not interview the candidate, but I spoke to those who did, um, and I had the recommendation from the administration, uh, and I will put a lot of faith in that and follow the recommendation.
Uh, the, um, the statement that if this candidate is not passed, that the administration would return here with the exact same candidate is unfathomable. Then then the pur- purpose of the board is 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 nearly moot.
The the board participated in
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that you stated, I'm sorry, that if this was turned down, it would come back to vote the exact same way.
What I'm saying is I think we could restart with the same applicant pool, and this person would still be a leading choice.
But if the board doesn't approve it, and the administration res submits the exact same candidate, what is the purpose of the
No, I didn't say that the board, if the board doesn't approve it, what I'm saying is if we, if we said that this was a process issue, and we changed the process, I believe the process, a change in process would still net us the best candidate, who I believe is this candidate. I'm not saying, I'm not removing the board's point of view in this process. The board had the opportunity to participate in the process, whether or not they chose to do so has to be up to us each individually. Additionally, not only whether or not it was a Google form that we were asked to participate in, if you didn't want to participate in the Google form, our Director of HR's phone number and office is known to every single person in this room and could have reached out. Through this entire process, we didn't, you met the candidate tonight, but this was not the first time you heard the candidate's name. This is not the first time that you were given their information. You were given opportunity and encouraged, quite frankly, by both Dr. Rattoli and I, to please reach out and have a conversation with us, if you wanted more information or more, uh, opportunity to discuss what had been presented to us. That opportunity was not taken, well, I shouldn't say that, the opportunity was taken by some people, I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, and Dr. Malmazak, and Ms. Sabo. But other people did reach out, have a conversation with Dr. Rattoli or I sometime over the last four to five days. This information is out there, and what the process is or isn't, to me, is a separate conversation than whether or not we're looking to move forward with this hire.
I'm actually curious to hear from the other people who voted to separate this item, because I think, I think David's point is well made, and and we've all heard it. I'd like to hear some of the other dissenting voices, just for perspective.
Well, I am not dissenting, I am questioning the process. I do think that we can find an opportunity for improvement to the process. Um, but in my review of the person's resume, of the feedback from the other, um, folks who were part of the interview process, I did not have any misgivings about that.
I'm not dissent, I'm not dissenting. I'm, just would like to get to a vote, if I'm gonna be honest. So, if this gets us to be able to vote, then I I would like to get us to be able to vote.
So, I'm gonna, at this point, say, uh, unless anyone has anything else they need to discuss, we're gonna go to a vote on this.
I would like to just make one more comment, that I think we're, I think it's to Jackie's credit, this is I would like to just make one more comment that I think we're, I think it's to Jackie's credit, this is so very contentious.
Again, if we could just vote to keep Mrs. Kermine, we would do that, but she will not let us do that. Believe me, I pitched it. It didn't work, so. But I am confident that we can move forward, and we're gonna do good things. This is not, not the end. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. We've had discussion. We're gonna go all in favor. Okay, sorry.
Safety.
For safety, we are voting to approve this hire, right, Mr.? Mr. Fransella?
There's a motion to approve David Fransella as Director of Business, Director of Business and Operations as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, so now I have, do we have to go back and do it?
Yeah. Remainder of the motion, remainder of 12.3's before the board for approval.
And that motion is made already and seconded. So is there any discussion on 12.2 through 12.6 with 12.3 removed? No, we don't do it either.
This is 12.3, just the remainder of 12.
Just the remainder of 12.3. Oy, okay. Any discussion on the remainder of 12.3? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Does anything else to do with that? Okay, so now we're moving on to 12.7. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the part-time and casual positions as presented, which is Agenda Item 12.7?
So moved.
Ms. Munson?
Second.
Dr. Mel Mazak? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention? Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 13, 13.1, new business. I'm gonna have to keep my glasses. The approval of Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second. Dr. Rotoli. Ms. Shebelle Fuller. And I, and I, any discussion, but I, I would like to lead our discussion by, I know, sharing the board's enthusiastic appreciation for our teaching staff here in OJ Roberts. We talk all the time about how, how many of us either are, currently have students in the building, or have recent graduates in our, in our family, or were one of our building teachers. But I think we can all talk to, and would all attest to the fact that the teachers here in OJ are something special. They do tremendous work, and our students are in, in good hands, and we hope that our teachers recognize how much that the, the board and this community appreciates the work that they do.
I'm just gonna add that I think it says a lot when, um, every year you're kind of afraid to go to the next grade because you've had such a great experience for the most part, and don't know what you're gonna get the next year. And every year you have another good experience and don't have enough good things to say about our teaching staff here. They've blown me away from a personal standpoint with my own family, and then working with some of them at a board level. It's just been a very open, eye-opening experience for me, and I think they're really willing to listen and considerate and respectful and willing to go out of their way to make sure they meet our, our kids' needs. And they will always be there. They're always there and always willing to help and pitch in and do what's right by kids.
Are you, are you tearing Ms. Shebelle Fuller? You made Ms. Shebelle Fuller cry. Okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13.2, the approval of Bus Driver Appreciation Week. May I have a motion for the approval of Bus Driver Appreciation Week, which is, we were in the middle, April 21 to April 25?
So moved.
Ms. Shebelle Fuller?
Second.
Ms. Sabo? Any discussion?
Just thank you. That is, that is a big job.
And maybe we should say bless you.
Yeah, thank you.
First and last people, most of our kids see every day.
Yep. And I think we all recognize that it is oftentimes not a, a job that is thanked a lot. And I hope that our bus drivers recognize that we are acutely aware that our district doesn't run if we don't have someone on these buses in the 110 square miles. And I, I can't even, I know Mrs. Kermine has the number, I'm sure, somewhere, the tens of thousands of miles that get driven in this district every single day. Or not tens of thousands, but thousands of miles that get driven every single day. And, and the schools would not run. We would not average children. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.3, the approval to grant diplomas to the class of 2025. May I have a motion for the approval to grant diplomas to the class of 2025 as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Shebelle Fuller.
Yes, clear.
Mr. Harmonos. Ms. Malin, I did look, your name is on the list. I literally paged through just to make sure, because that would have been awkward. But, um, yeah, I think we're all looking forward to the class 25. I did, well, I'll admit, I looked for my kid's name first, and then I looked for yours, but everybody else is just, is just icing on the cake of this. But, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.4, the approval of out-of-state overnight student trips. May I have a motion for the approval of out-of-state overnight student trips as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Chester?
Second.
Dr. Rotoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.5, the approval of conference attendance. May I have a motion for the approval of conference attendance as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Mel Mazak?
Second.
Ms. Munson? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.6, the approval of textbooks for the 25-26 school year. May I have a motion for the approval of textbooks for the 25-26 school year as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Mr. Chester, any discussion?
If you would like to see any of the books, they're offered, but the offer is always open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.7, the ratification of homebound instruction. May I have a motion for the ratification of homebound instruction as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Mr. Chester? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.8, the approval of a confidential settlement agreement and release. May I have a motion for the approval of a confidential settlement agreement and release as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Dr. Mel Mazak, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.9, the approval of Original Policy 351 Drug and Substance, excuse me, Drug and Substance to Regulation 351A, the Employee Assistance Program for Second Reading. Do I have a motion for the, sorry, do I have a motion for the approval of Original Policy 351 Drug and Substance to Regulation 351A, Employee Assistance Program for Second Reading as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Munson?
Second.
Ms. Sabo, any discussion?
I'd just like to remark, for those who know the difference between regulation and policy, once we move something to a regulation, then we no longer require voting on it in order for changes to be made. It, it would just be communicated to the board that changes are being made to that regulation, and that seemed appropriate for the meat of what was in this particular policy.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.10, approval of policies for second reading. May I have a motion for the approval of policies for second reading as presented? And this includes Policy 351, Policy 202, and Policy 803.
So moved.
Ms. Sabo?
Second.
Dr. Rotoli? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.11, the approval of policies for deletion for second reading. May I have a motion for the approval of policies for deletion for second reading as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Munson and Dr. Rotoli? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.12, the approval of Student Activity Club Advisors and Student Officers. May I have a motion for the approval of Student Activity Club Advisors and Student Officers in accordance with the provisions of Section 511 of the Pennsylvania School Code for the 24-25 year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Shebelle Fuller, Mr. Harmonos, any discussion?
I'm, I'm just, um, just have a quick question about it. I don't recall seeing clubs, organizations formed when we have teams normally, so I...
It's the student account for the team.
Got it.
Yeah. So it, that's why it has a student president and treasurer, because they, that makes sense. Thank you. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.13, the approval of the 25-26 Chester County Intermediate Unit Number 24 Budget. May I have a motion for the approval of the 25-26 Chester County Intermediate Unit 24, Number 24 Budget as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Munson?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos? All, uh, any discussion?
Um, I would just comment that I didn't bring it up tonight, but this does include a 4% increase to the TCHS pickering tuition costs. So all those figures of exactly how it will affect OJR have been included in written documents that I have reviewed. But if anybody else wants to see them, I'm glad to pass along.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.14, the approval of proposed 25-26 Governmental and Proprietary Funds Budget. May I have a motion for the approval of the proposed 25-26 Governmental and Proprietary Funds Budget as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Munson? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.15, approval of resolution authorizing notice of proposed final budget display and advertising. May I have a motion for the approval of resolution authorizing notice of proposed final budget display and advertising?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Munson? Any discussion?
I just think it would be helpful to point out where it's displaying, just for the hundredth time, so that if...
The budget itself? Yes, so it will be, we advertise for it, and it will go out on April 30th, the advertisement. And we have a hard copy, for anybody who needs a hard copy, at the front desk, so Joyce Mauer will have a copy of that. And then we also provide links, and it is in the backup for board docs in the public section, and also the finance department webpage on our district's website, all of the meetings, all the detail for all the meetings leading up to the final proposed budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.16, the approval of final budget notice. May I have a motion for the approval of final budget notice as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos? Ms. Munson? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.17, the approval of award for request for proposals for Food Service Management Company. May I have a motion for the approval of award of request for proposals, Food Service Management Company, as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Shebelle Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.18, the approval of award, sorry, approval for award of request for proposals for copier services. May I have a motion for the approval for award of request for proposals for copier services to Rico, RICO USA Incorporated, 300 Eagle Bay Boulevard, Suite 200, Exton, PA 19341, for a 48-month lease beginning July 1, 2025, as presented? Please.
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Dr. Rotoli, any discussion?
I have a question. So are we doing less and less copying as time goes on, since there's so many things on the web?
We are certainly trying, right, Dr. Sceeta? And the actual lease cost has gone down for us because of that, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.19, the approval for an addendum to the original Architectural Services Agreement with Schrader Group to provide design services for the infrastructure grant received to upgrade HVAC systems. Oy, may I have an emotion for the approval for an addendum to the original Architectural Services Agreement with Schrader Group, 555 East North Lane, Suite 5100, Building D, Conshohocken, Pennsylvania, 19428, for the long-term facilities plan that was originally approved at the October 28, 2024 school board meeting? The addendum is to provide design services for the infrastructure grants received to upgrade HVAC systems at the middle school, North Coventry Elementary School, and West Vincent Elementary School as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos? Dr. Mel Mazak? Any discussion? Would anyone like me to read it again? No, we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.20, the approval of construction agreement with S.J. Thomas Company Incorporated through Gordian Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative. May I have a motion for the approval of a construction agreement with S.J. Thomas Company Incorporated through Gordian Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative for French Creek Elementary School and Westvincent Elementary School Classroom conversions to accommodate full-day kindergarten in the amounts of $72,116.85 and $87,023.29, respectively, as presented?
So moved.
Ms., Dr. Mel Mazak?
Second.
Dr. Rotoli? Any discussion?
Do I have to abstain from this? They're a client of mine professionally.
In order, and to err on the side of caution, I would.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye. Stand.
Okay. Mrs. Kermine, do you have notation? Thank you.
I'll get them for him.
13.21, the approval of agreement for the sale of real estate and land condemnation resolution. May I have an approval of an agreement for the sale of real estate with Gerald and Roseanne Greenwich for $510,000 in land condemnation resolution as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Mel Mazak?
Second.
Dr., Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.22, the approval of professional services, excuse me, professional service and maintenance agreement. May I have a motion for the approval of professional service and maintenance agreements as presented? We're almost there, guys.
Aye.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Ms. Munson? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 14, 14.1, public comment. Information, proposals, and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to any item. Speakers are to indicate your name and township of residence. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. Also, if you have a question for the school board, please email all board of school directors at schoolboardmembers@ojrsd.net. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence. Okay. At this time, is there any discussion, follow-up, or request for information from the board?
So can I just say thank you to Dr. Soder, who so kindly took the time during this holiday weekend to get me information about the new ELA book, HMH. She sent me some really valuable information that I read thoroughly, and it helped convince me to approve of this textbook, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.